Sit down please, everybody. Sit down, don't move. Please, please.
We are the champion of the land of the future.
Ladies and gentlemen. 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 I know you love this society, but please stop that loss. He has more things to do, he has more functions to go through, please. Ladies and gentlemen. I believe in you both, you know, Jesus, even when you wish, God wants your seed. Even when you try, I would do it, I know, I would do it, I would do it. I know you love this society, but please sit down. Please, let's get some rest, let's get some rest, so that we start. What will happen, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. Please.
Yes, sir. So, we take this matter, everybody, can you sit down, please?
Please.
May someone ask them, please.
As we are starting.
May someone ask them, everybody stand up.
May all nights for him, I tell this. Alright, if I give my phone, all the camera people, if you have one among the official camera man, please go and get some rest. Thank you. Please, just as I let me sit there, I need a youth to come and show me prayer now. Because a youth, please pray. Just please for me, please.
Okay.
Nigerian students. Greatness, Nigerian students. And we will start in a long time. But before, many so. Excellent, welcome to you, of this, in Jesus' name, in the highest name of Jesus. Father, we thank you for this 24 day. We thank you for the work you have started in the life of Nigerians and in their entire country of Nigeria. But at this moment we started, you will permanent it in the name of Jesus. Even as you have set out to make the change and take what thou come true. That will experience in the name of Jesus. We have everything we do today concerning Annabras Day, unto your mighty hands, let your will be done and your name will be glorified in Jesus' name. Put your hands together for our Lord Jesus Christ. Alright, please, just as you are walking, let me give the Michael, for the people here invite the member of the priestess here, uh, passing him here, when he was asking the question of, and pastor, now he is in people, making care for his priest, open the mouth, taking.
No, no, please, there is not opening remarks right now, so, this is how it's going to happen, listen to me, everybody. We want to quickly engage this excellency as soon as possible, as quick as possible, because we don't have all the time in the world. So, those of you that have questions to ask me, I'm going to ask you to raise your hands, and I'm going to come to you, right, you're going to ask me your question. I'm giving it a little from about 30 seconds to ask your question, and we go, alright, mother one.
Let's not give anyone who raise your hand.
Anyway.
Uh, listen there to, uh, go to, uh, I don't know, most Canadian, for further particularly Gogo, uh, the, mister, they have to say, the mission goes like this. I want to, uh, want to hear your final word on your assurance concerning Assis Prime. If eventually it gets into a complete problem, what is the possibility that Assis Prime will never come again with administration? Because there's not going to be a recurring situation from different administration, from 2009, the agreement has not been made, and the economy is in, in jeopardy, he must assure that, mister, around, mister. Thank you.
Thank you so much, so I'm going to go speak nicely, this my step, ask your question, 30 second.
Who is this, excellency?
Hold on, please, can someone, just better go away, matter which place. Hold on, with your question, please, can someone just.
Who is this, excellency? My name is Oluwobi Blessing, this my question is, as the president, the rate of examination for practice from the first school goes high.
Allow her to ask a question, please. Can you allow her to ask a question, please?
The rate, the rate of examination for practice from the last year, from the primary, secondary, is very high now. And it's still in the educational system, it's outside now. Many people are not going to acquire that knowledge, they are going to acquire the certificate. You as the president, this excellency, sir, how are you going to tackle this mess?
Thank you so much, my sister.
Alright, sit down, everyone, sit down, everyone, if you're not sitting.
Please, let's get some rest.
I will not allow you to ask question, if you're not sitting.
Because I am alone now.
I will not allow you to ask question, if you're not sitting. So, the next person, the next person, here, alright.
My excellency. My excellency, my question. My excellency, my question is, on, on Etah River Port, and on Etah River Port, the S travels and it has a river port. It's already like a, a valuable situation that we keep, they keep promising us that river dredge. So, how will you do that, connecting the Lagos River Port and the Etah River Port?
Thank you so much, my sister. So, we have three questions now, I'm going to take two more, and then we allow this excellency to answer.
Don't worry. Two more.
If you're not sitting, I will not allow you to ask question, and I will keep my word, if you're not sitting, you cannot ask question.
My excellency, sir, uh, my name is Superman, I'm a private student. I want us, I want to ask, I want to ask, to assure us, the great of youth involvement in politics. Like, what would you do to assure that our youth are active and viable in the politics? Thank you very much, sir.
Alright, so the last person, please, if you stand up, mention you are in university, because.
Good morning, Odukebe, Odukebe, Nigeria, I'm a B.A. student, I'm a faculty of pharmacy, I give. First of all, excellency, you came late, sir. We are known that this event was for serving the world, sir, this is a very important thing. And if we create new values, we build a better society for our project. So, sir, I want you to first of all, start apologizing to everybody now. You're coming late, go on, you, sir. I'm a student here, and we can, I don't know why, when you were at the, when you saw our boss, we came with our faculty boss, and we, we have a lecture now, the first one, we passed the lecture, the second one, now, we might get one, the lecture is in class now. But because my students wanted to see their poster, look at them now. They are still here waiting for you since 7 o'clock, I want them off by 6 past, to be here, they say they are not there till they see you. And after these questions, sir, many of you are saying we are leaving, sir, last but not the least, we are not giving anything for transportation, I paid the transportation with my money, I bought this with my money, I paid the driver with my money, because my students want to see you, because I myself want to see you. I'm a big fan of yours, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, alright, so, everybody, sit down.
Can we all sit down now? That will be all for now, please.
Can we, can we all sit down, allow this excellency to answer these questions?
Just sit down, he will touch most of your questions, please.
Please, 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 sit down, please, we don't want, everybody, please, sit down. Please, can everybody sit down, please? Please, can you sit down, please? Yes, Nigerian students. Let me, camera, that, that's a comma, sir, you are talking. I'll start with the, I'll start with the last question, okay? See the man where asked the question, then I, they block him. Let me start with last question. You know, I want you to know, I want. Let me, by, make sure you're not blocking, you can make that, I think, thank you, I listen. I want you to know, first of that, I will do exactly what you say, but I also need to connect. Let me, most sincerely, most sincerely, upon our times, for those of you, a lot of you who have been here since 7:30 or 8 a.m. I am very, very, as you tell you, apologize, but I can tell you, of my own accord, I was ready to be here for, let us, 8:30, 9:00 a.m. I was told that it was this one that the mobilized, started, I should be here 10:00, 10:30. So, I apologize, and some of the people who are coming with me, were stopped for a summer, people are telling me, have to cross. People are stuck in the soup, have to cross the bridge, so they are stopped, and I said to them, I'm going, so I sincerely apologize. And again, what you should imagine about, you have, what you should imagine about, you are helping to, be the one, what you should imagine about, you are being the one to pay for your students to be here, and everything. I'm sincerely appreciative and grateful, this is a sacrifice we're doing for the new Nigeria. Let me assure you, that we, the fact that Professor Kamete is not here. That we, the fact that Professor Kamete is not here, if he's here, he will still make exactly what I'm going to do. Renew Nigeria as possible. Never use of Nigeria, do you have Professor Kamete's campaign, and besides to see the youth, besides to see them and talk with them? That is what we need today. So, we assure you, we will do that, and I thank you, I'm sure we'll get to know each other.
Thank you for coming, thank you for coming.
Somebody thanks about Assis Prime. Let me assure you, four years will be four years. Can you clap your hands? We can not, we can not participate this way. It is not acceptable. We will find a way, we'll find a way to fund the university. We'll find a way to fund tertiary education. It is this program. It is not about you. It is about our society. Like I said, as going on Annabras Day, every single prefect of a secondary school have my phone number. And the president of Nigeria, every assu, bishop, the president, who have my phone number. And I said it, I've not said it for the first time, I've said it about three or five places, I cannot sit as president, as government, I've been to every secondary school, that is Annabras Day, as president, I will visit every university. It is not a difficult thing. Because I want to listen to you, it's your society, we are doing it for you, we don't want to waste your time, it is about you. So, the rest has shown, we will do whatever is possible. Remember, on that day, Ash went to strike, when I was a governor, he asked me to strike, because of what we did, they will not put a last strike, who do the same thing as President, so they will start in a strike. And potentially, my friend Professor Kamete wants to invest. Are you aware? He wants to invest, and I always tell him, if you are investing with the open, we assure this one is open. That was my, that's what I asked special about. My part, my part is, let me tell you, when I came here, I came to this opportunity, I came to learn. So, I thank the person that asked the question there, and I thank you. What I want to hear, is for you to tell me the truth, I want to hear bad news. I want you to tell me, that somebody said I came late, and I came late, there's nothing wrong, this is what we must start in Nigeria, we must tell people where they are wrong, nobody knows everything, except if you're an idiot. Nobody, an idiot, he knows everything, and anybody who knows everything should not leave, I'm a learner, and as you know, I'm a trader, so I'm not sophisticated person, who should learn, so, my sister, you are correct. There are things we need to deal with, you know, people talk about, the reason why in this country, we do exam and practices, because, don't blame your students, blame the system. Because the parties have come low, and we should celebrate certificate, and we celebrate certificate, even not celebrate certificate, it is only, we have achieved basic education, you know very well. For here and across, we celebrate certificate, everybody thinks, oh, if I don't have certificate, if I fail in university, oh, it would be a problem. You are making me talk about the biggest company in the world, the founder, you know, both of the universities, is not a student, I didn't have the certificate. But today, he's the founder of the biggest company in the world, and I want others to know. Who says so? What did he say? As I am sure of him, yes, right? You know him. He's not only the founder of the biggest company in the world. Somebody have said it there, in Tars, in Tars is the founder of Apple. In Tars was picked from a hole in a modelized people's home. And of course, the difference is there, and you can go all alone, I can tell you about another company that's something like that, so many of them, where people say, you don't have certificate, usually, all who want to teach people, you are skilled, not even certificate, skilled, to learn how to do services, so that's it. There are no questions talked about ports. Somebody talks about ports. You know, you live in a productive country, or not productive country, your country does not produce anything, so they come to them, they don't even want to drink the waters. By dredging the river Naja and river Benue, you will actually be able to increase the water transportation, which will bring help, the roads to be stay longer. And dredging is not sophisticated, the comfort of water every day, all the flooding you see, it will do dredging, all the flooding you see annually will stop, will do downs and everything, and it's not difficult to do. River Nile in Egypt is everything the Egyptians celebrate, so if you see Egypt, and they say, no Nile, not Egypt, that's what it should be for us, no Nigeria, and Egypt is not difficult. Jazzy river Naja and Benue will go along the trees and water transportation and everything, and river Naja and river Benue is not up to the length of river Nile. River Naja is 4,200 kilometers long, and the river Benue is 1,400, 2,500, 6, river Nile, 6,400, 6. It's something that, it's something that, who fixes? I can assure you, we are not in business for a job, we will deal with it, it is not, we are not productive. I think you are taking the five questions. We are done with the five questions, excellency. We will take the next one. Alright, like I said earlier, if you're not sitting down, you are not sitting, I'm sorry, I will not allow you to ask a question, if you're not sitting down, if you want to in Nigeria, we must all be, not at me, alright?
I greet you all, and I greet our president. My name is Awoye Ejezinta. Best, I listen, thank you. Our president, sir, are you listening? Okay, so, I want to highlight, yes, the problem in Nigerian system, because of our idea that we will never suffer. So, the thing is that, in terms of ashu and any other thing, are the, when you are acting in mass of rich and poor, you are putting everything together, like, I've seen you explore the world, and you have seen how the school systems are there. Now, we are talking about ashu, like, I don't see that, it's a system that works for Nigeria, even if you are trying to, like, work on it, like, how do we, like, how do we, even what is there, why is it, how do we, like, explore that opportunity and make Nigeria a better school system, not only in the building, but at large? Because as I'm looking at it, it's not, it's not a harsh problem, it's a Nigerian problem, so I want to, I like your, for, how you, what made that.
Thank you so much, thank you so much, so, I have this young man here, hold on, hold on guys, hold on guys, hold on, calm down, everybody have a question, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Alright, so, stand up and ask your question, because you are the most.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. President, uh, I understand those lines, though, it's a fracking issue, I don't want to actually push, and that's the question is, uh, with the massive social strength that living in these stations, people, all are naked, or what, what are the things they want to contribute to this world? Actually have, you know, a level where structuralize and, uh, companies and industries, some of these people can actually work, every year, in practice, in practice, we pay, uh, uh, these issues, but it's no job, it's no job, so are we going to do about it? Are you someone spending so much money, going to be, the market, they can't find any electricity, it's a pressing, I don't know what you are going to do, but I find it so very important that you actually address this issue, it's a, it's a national issue.
Thank you so much, so we move on to the next person. Like I said, if you're not sitting down, we are not asking.
My excellency, we are, we are all wanted to have you in, you in our presence today, and my question here is, our lives that we are shown is security, that we are shown. We are students of, you know, of Nigeria, security was we are shown, and the president before Bahari, this was what was written into, and obviously, that was one part of what I've seen, and we are shown security. My question here is, how can you give us assurance of security, and how is it going to affect the Nigerian students?
Thank you so much, so we need two more persons, and then we are like this, excellency, hold on. If you're not sitting down, you cannot ask question. If you're not sitting, you can ask question, alright?
Good morning, everyone. His excellence is a big one. There's no doubt that you are one of the, so you're very, very excited for this question, for this election. Now, straightforward to my question. I believe the issue of illegitimacy and lax communication is something that is great, greater than legitimacy in this country. So, without statistics. Okay. I, it's just what the question, I said, the issue of, it's free speech and freedom of speech. You can say that, you can say that, it's a right to speak. Now, it is, everybody, you should do. But without statistics, it's a problem. Most of the, the, average man, like I said, is missing, absent. Yes, it's pretty, pretty, or hard, or like, well, we are not able to, see the statistics. And I mean, lots of everybody that watches the things you say on our screens, or learn from it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. So, they are going to take the last person before you, let me see. Hold on, hold on, hold on. If you are not sitting down on your side, you cannot ask question. So, hold on, hold on, hold on, everybody. So I want to allow a woman to ask a question.
You are mad, you are mad. You are mad.
Everyone, can you sit down? Can you sit down, please?
I'm glad, yes.
Please sit down, please. Alright, alright, please. Let the last person ask question, and then eventually, we take the question, we go to the next one. Like I said, if you are not sitting down, you will not ask question, you are simple as that. I don't care who you are.
Please, they are waiting to see that. Right, so, yeah, I know my answer. The best person is, uh, that's, uh, one, three. And we have to show them, and I thank so much, the best person. We are, we are, people that have been there, so people that, and people that, you see, be there. And the best person is, uh, what I want to say is, for them, we students, we, some of us here, also we are students, we, some of us come from poor families. And we are trying to make sure that we make our families proud. Some of us here cannot pay bills. So after finishing our, um, schooling, or challenging, we go home, yes. Some persons here, now elder ones, have no job. Then we come there, but somebody, somebody talk about insecurity, insecurity. If we have those persons that are supposed to support, not having a job, and they also have, like, life again. Where you see that, where you see that you don't have job, you also have to.
Let me tell you. Alright, so we have five questions. Your first, I want to ask you, I want to ask those questions. You will hit your question, calm down. You will hit your question, calm down. Alright, that's a, yeah, inside. Please, please, sit down. Sit down. I have for myself, I have, please, I mean, can you sit down? Good shit. Let me tell you, you are the first. Please come out. Please, can you, I want to, I want to see the people I'm talking to. Let me assure you, you know. I've seen this town whole with you. I've been through this town whole with you in various places. And we have been having a more organized environment, and it causes to have, we have been lost. So, let us really go through it. Somebody here asked, is it possible to have water tap outside their ear? Is that your question? I never. It's very easy. What they are doing there is not impossible to have here. The privilege you have as a person is that, like you, I want to try to bring for example, I want to sugar. Then I have had privilege in my little lives, and passing through, at least 50% of the top 12 schools, universities, or factor of leading the world. Out of it, I'm an among those of four. At least I'm an among those of hospital, and bridge, and their fellow. If you could go to there, I said, it has been, they show you my number. And in privilege, the past to Hama, Columbia, London School of Technology. So you know. In fact, the people who are there, it is a great thing to the condition you're going to school, you're off it. Because I've seen the conditions, and I've been back on it. So I can tell you, it is easy to do it. We all have to start building in Nigeria, where things can work everywhere. And it can work, and it's not reckless time. I love West Coast, for example, schools that closed in 2001, 2001. Is that right? And I see 2002. You can number two, six, and seven, my head can make it, we became number one.
Yes. That is true.
Something can happen anywhere. Someone that have any security. Into his manifesto, the first priority of, I am amended to, to secure and unite Nigeria. The first role of a government is security. Only people are secure, and not doing well. I spent my Christmas day in N'Di Dika, in Benue. I spent my February 1, 1st of February day in N'Di Dika, in Abidah. And I said to them, as long as I'm in N'Di Dika, Nigeria is in N'Di Dika. I will end the N'Di Dika. Who deal with this security? When I came here as governor, if you don't know, there's so many people occupy, so many terrorists. And like I said before, I will negotiate, I will discuss with everybody. And I didn't even, I came here, when I came here, a group of people were on the back. Some people were collecting tolling on the town, and everything. I went down, and I sat down and said, let's talk. No, you believe me, listen to me. No, you don't believe me, they listen to me. And I told them, the more you want, the more you will have. With our shared territory. It can consume me by consuming you. Or you can not share. That's how I, I form the identity in every community. So this, really, which is your security, is not what I'm going to tell you exactly how I'm going to do it. Our security measure.
We believe you. We believe you.
It's not guaranteed with that. There's no, we have a country, and a country must be safe for Nigeria. If we are war, we create a war, and we will not have war. And we will not do it, but we can not have people destroying our territory, not a problem. You would do with it.
That gives a job, a job.
Are you sure?
I have to that.
And I'm not one to talk about that, sir. The reason why there is no job, and you're not getting a job in your country is because your country is not a productive country. The biggest part of our government is a good Nigeria from consumption to.
Production.
All of them are part of it. Your country is not producing anything. Your country is not giving anything. Some of them are talking about, we are looking for a job. You shouldn't be looking for a job, you should be creating job. That's what you are. All the summer's offerings we are looking for today, we are formed by people in university. I talk about Microsoft. I talk about Apple. We get, I extend, new family, Microsoft, these are our students of Harvard. No, no, they're Google, everything, all these are students. They start in school, you know what they use for that. They found the Russell, the top driver, they are students, they are all this knowledge. Some of them, they are not there, but they know. There's no problem, my sister. The question I'm not, I'm talking about poverty. You are never poor, the child of God. No child of God is poor. You can change the world. You can comfortably change the world. There's nobody who are not poor, that's all we want to do. We want to create a society where a child of God money will become the president. A society that is never less poor. I think in the future, I promise I supported you. That's what I want to do. You want to support people, you are poor. Only the poor have the guns to do, the rich, they just want. Every year, every 10 years or 20 years, what is changing something? That might see that is rich today, because the children, because poor, the poverty, the gun for that. So it's important that, in your mind, never say no. The child of God. But what do we do to make the country productive? And then, all of them want to graduate and go and work for someone. Entire Nigeria, all of them know, the entire Nigeria, do not have a technical score last year. Technical score of Nigeria. Because you don't have certificate. Your company, what is component of Nigeria? How much funding? What is the size of Nigeria?
The size of Nigeria. It's more than Nigeria.
I tell you, because I'm not looking to leave this town on me. Please, I can see that, I can do this, I can do that. This event is streaming live on YouTube. So there is no reason why everybody should not sit down at this one. It's because of money. Come, I think I, you can sit down, okay?
Sit down, hold on.
Nigeria is a country of 240, let's use 240 million. It's a country of 240 million. Our own size is 943,000,000. We cannot feed ourselves. We can't feed ourselves, thereby, we can't express hope. India is 1.4 billion people. And they give on 3.2 million square kilometers of land. India can feed itself, and they export agricultural goods. Yet they're not population. And have less land. Because, if you compare, we are one seventh of their population, but we have more of their land. They have 3.2 million square kilometers of land, we have 100,000, which is almost, we have more of their land, and we have one seventh of their composition. People can't, but the very smart, the smartest in the north. That's what's wrong, for the better land in the north, and give us more money than oil. But because of a sharing mentality, we are being shared. Do not argue that in Nigeria. One just, yes, yes, right? No, no, one, the one just, no, another one? Okay. The three biggest states in Nigeria, the three largest states in Nigeria is Nigeria state number one. Borneo is number two, Araba is number three. Nigeria state are the best for the world. Their land is very, they can feed the whole Nigeria. Nigeria state is 76.3 thousand square kilometers of land. So they can talk to citizens, they can see Nigeria. They can afford some three allocation, put this money, we share their business, they get about 75 billion every month after the election. So they get about 15 billion, and that's what they depend on. For Nigeria state, it's two and a half times the size of Nigeria without water. Nigeria without water, that's 3,000,000 square kilometers. That is two and a half times, what now the next? Another last year, a total agricultural product of over 13 billion dollars. What they did in export, in fixed time for Nigeria and some oil, they didn't have the budget. So the international state was able to do 2%, 2% of what they land. Where they have two and a half times their land, deep in export, they're getting 2.4 million dollars. If you want to drive a ship, it's only 15,000 dollars. It will give you a lot of price. And the price nice, what they get from share. But because of not productive, they are still sharing. Several local companies in Nigeria is under control of banks. Because they don't have a job, and they are looking for job. Somebody don't have a job, yeah, somebody don't have a job. That's why you should do, the country wants to productive. Well, Borneo state is same thing. Borneo state is 70.9 thousand square kilometers. In fact, the place I give out for in Borneo state, the Sanfisa forest area is 60,000 square kilometers. Sanfisa forest is 3 times the size of Israel. It's there, it's there is 3 times that, Sanfisa forest is 60,000. You can't have such a place, and it's not just trouble, and you can't go on the university. We are not productive. So we need to change all that, and then go to areas productive. Today is Araba. Araba today is, they are poor, they are 6,000, they are poor, Araba is 54.4 thousand square kilometers. Araba is bigger than Belgium and USA combined. Friends and masters, 30, 30.9 thousand square kilometers. This is 2.9. This is two point one, two and a half, Taraba is fifty four point four. But they can't feed themselves, because they are sharing money. That's all what you do, they use, sharing formula, and repeating production formula, and you not have job. Taraba is on the best of, on the force of Nigeria. You can protect flower here. Here in Nigeria, sort of, Oba have here. Oba have a children, Oba might, say a last year, has bought then, over five hundred million worth of flower. Five hundred million dollars. Oba have a billion flower, and when they are so young girls and boys, they give flower, and they pay hundred dollars, money. I'm not talking about them, they can grow coffee and tea in the Taraba. They judge they have bought it, coffee, one point one billion dollars last year. And they can break them, seven acres as far as they are, give one point four billion worth of tea, what is Nigeria here, money? Our total export last year is eighteen point nine trillion dollar. Even to money by sixty six, is about thirty billion, and we are two hundred and ninety billion people. Plus, two hundred, at thirty billion people, living on land, and three thousand square kilometers of land. A company like Vietnam, that is our star, that is half of our population, they have hundred billion people, living on territory, and one thousand square kilometers of land. Their total export is about three hundred and sixty billion dollars. So my dear people, unless your country is productive, you cannot be done. No, it's not the means, it's the leader. No, the leader, let me tell you, everything the things that is in the leader. I say it was several of our states where people not go to school in one year, several of our states where they said, young boys don't look at boys as a public school. Several of our states where people don't want to go to public school. Public school in Nanam State today is hot cake, they have computer, they have everything, and it's nothing. So it wasn't selling. Every community in Nanam State, every community in Nanam State, when I was governor, had a vision, that I say. They have a, they have a stick on, every school had a boss. So, what, what, what change? We are the person that want, it says there, it has, it has a wish. We are not white missionaries, and answer, we are not white anybody. At the end of the day, we see seven. What we want to do, is to remove Nigeria from consumption. And create a future for you, create a good world for you, create a job for you, support small business, small business are you. So you can stop small business, you put money in your hand, and you can create a future. Everything you see in the world was started by small people. They can change it. The biggest, any place people don't look for job, they don't get. No, the biggest, almost starting company in China, spread world company. Eh? How, which company? In China, Alibaba. Alibaba, Tegma. Tegma went to interview, to be a police man. They didn't take him because he was short. He went to be, he went to sell food in Madonna, they wouldn't take him because the counter was opposing. And he went to teach, was a teacher, and a father, a mother. Today, probably you test people in service of the land. Why they say you, it could be you, you are there to change the world. Nothing stops you, nothing that is stopping you is that society is not supportive. It is corrupt because of it, it's celebrate corruption. Society is corrupt because it celebrate corruption, I mean, it's true, it's all about the world. Change starts from university, change starts from the youth, is about your future. If you would tell me that your future was out, was through this, no. Election is coming up, if you that was want to tell your police governor in Nigeria, regard for through this. It was this, but, so my dear people, I thank you for your attention, staying with me for this one. I want people to know, and I care, I know the sacrifice, I know the pain, what it is for you, to come out this morning, abandoning everything you are supposed to be doing. But let me tell you, this is one two three, still abroad. When there's election, they are discussing who will make their future work. I told somebody, I said, somebody asked me, how are we going to find in the country? I said, we are going to do it in a combination of so many things. What? Now the government will increase what they are putting in. I will increase it, amount of money we are putting in education today as two, I will increase it. I said, number two, number two, we are going to bring companies that will support us, number three will try whether we can reach our first goal. And he said, he said, he said, how? We can't pay those are better, I said, that is beauty of it, we can not expect, it's all help. If we give, if we give, if we give, wanted to go to school, if you know I'm a job, I even the cost of finger, the pain, no. So who created, that's what is the great job, because that's the only way you can pay, and that makes school work. It makes it work, but we can't shut it down, because Nigeria needs to increase the intake of this institution. The global average is not eight percent, we are dealing only nine percent. It will not be, it will not be one fourth of the global average. Somebody asked the person here, he said, whether I'm a space, I should make it easy, so that people in the markets can hear. I'm in the market, I'm a trader. I didn't, I'm a trader, I trade in the market. It's easy, what I'm saying is not anything, it's not anything, it's something that I study and say, why did this now ask me? Why would this now be doing better than I'm doing? We live a life where we must study, watch our people. If you go to anybody now and say, how did he start? Women here, who is the best designer? What is the most popular design in Nigeria? Eh? Design, this is, okay, what is, what is, what is the popular name, who can say?
Gucci, Al.
Eh? Yes, the woman, Diana, who again? No, no, you won't. Yes. Okay, I wish you, I wish you read background about that thing. If today, I think the winner for so far is Gucci. Why did how, how do Gucci founded Gucci company? I remember John, John Malone. There's so many others you read, so you are just there, and surely, we will make it productive. My dear people, the day is far worse, eh? I thank people for their effort. We have election coming up. We have election coming up on the twenty fifth of February this year. Eh? Tell me, now the election, I'm here, we are calling product set of people, who are on the show for you, and I'll tell you what is the spirit of another. We have people now, are working together. The leader of our deep end is here, Professor Fazu Tom. The former, the former professor of entrepreneurship. So when we are talking about creating wealth, this is the man. We have our former veteran candidate, and a very successful person, Palatani Monia. We have the chairman of our party, regional chairman of our party, Julian Apul Eghia. You know, when I talk about our parties, I want you to be unique, and understand what we are doing. If you put my edge, and the edge of my mass, but this are candidates together, and the man is into you, you get about sixty, sixty seven. We are the only two candidate that can combine and within that age. The other one is combined in seventy, million. One is seventy three plus sixty four, seventy, the other one, who doesn't know English, but we give it to them. Paul of Luke. The something does, the something does when we are the chairman of parties. The chairman of the two big parties, we are three major contenders or four. The chairman of the two major parties, and we are seventy, and chairman is sixty two.
Wow.
We are bringing this, we are bringing this to you, so you know what we are doing. We send this comment to the government, government of women and youth, and we are bringing in there. So this now, you are mine, you not going to our chairman, is your own professor.